Very. Pushing up. All right, let's call and order the March first twenty twenty three meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Please join me in the Pleasant Legion.
Pleasant Legion, we applaud the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, individual liberation.
Thank you. All right, as we do with each of our meetings, we have two public discussion periods, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end, actually. Yeah, so with that, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be recognized? All right, seeing no one moving right along, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through C?
So move second.
Moved in second and all in favor say hi.
Hi.
Pose nay, push it carries. Committee reports zoning hearing board, Mike is not here.
There are no applications for March.
No. Parkward Holly.
The next part for meeting will be in this room at seven P M on March twenty eighth.
Excellent. Fire chief. Not in the things. So we have a report from Highsville Fire Community Fire Company, if anyone wants to see it, they can do Joe or Holly. Freedom Valley Medical Rescue, Don.
Hi, good evening. How are you? Good. It's Burgman, Mr. Kraus. Congratulations on that position. For Freedom Valley Medical Rescue, we had a total of five hundred and sixty six calls for all of our stations. For the Harley Road Station, we have two hundred and sixteen, one hundred and nine of them in Lower Southford, sixty five in Franconia, and then forty four calls in other areas surrounding the area. On February eighth, we completed a key M T class over at your finance. Our train division also did a CPR class for East Green Hill Fire Company. And on February fourteenth and fifteenth, we did a wellness, our wellness division did a health fair locally and over one hundred sets of vital signs and.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Don.
Communications Committee, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This month, we were happy to have Miss Jessica Lair Castle join us at our last communications committee. Miss Castle resubmitted a resume and after our meeting, she is even more excited about joining the committee. We hope the board will consider appointing Jessica to the committee at the next meeting. Our communication survey has officially closed. We want to thank everyone who took the time to complete the survey. I also want to thank Holly for helping us to both post and advertise the survey. The results are in and we plan to review them at our next meeting. I'll make sure the board has a copy of the survey results as well. Our next meeting takes place on March fifteenth at seven thirty P M. As always, we encourage residents and business owners to join us and offer any feedback you may have. You can join us March fifteenth, both here at the Township Building and on Zoom. Thanks.
How many people took the time to fill out the survey?
The grand total was three.
Thirty two.
Very nice.
So.
Very nice. That's great.
A lot of people, it was almost half, I believe, at least filled out, you know, more details as well, comments. So there's a lot to review.
And I understand the park board would like to do a survey coming up here. So it's a good starting base to go off of from that standpoint.
That's great. And when we pay for the survey monkey, it is good for a year. And one of the things we said would be advantageous for any other committees.
Absolutely.
So I think it's a great, it's a great thing for it to allow.
And let me do another point the next one.
Yeah, okay. We get that on the agenda.
Yeah.
And circulate the resume.
Yes, that'll be on there. Castle, is that her name?
Yes, it'll be on your work session. So she can start at the next meeting.
Good, perfect.
All right, next up Recreation Authority, which I typically would give, however, I was out of state, out of town. So Joe, I think you may have been in attendance if you were.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in January was a very good month for the golf course. Their revenue was fifty eight thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars on a budget of sixteen thousand four hundred dollars. So it was.
Spectacular.
Nine hundred and forty one rounds for the month on a budget of two hundred rounds. So it was really a pretty spectacular. February is looking really good. They're at about twenty four thousand in golf and ten thousand carts as of, so that's up last week. They expect that at the end of February, they will be about ten thousand dollars short of March revenue. So.
It's ahead of the game.
Yes, well ahead of the game.
Terrific. Well, when the weather is nice, we see lots of gold, lots of good. All right, thank you, Joe. Moving right along, unfinished business. We have before us ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh one repealing the fee schedule for building and zoning applications in consideration to adopt this ordinance. This is going to repeal this repeal the ordinance and then we're going to adopt, right? Resolution later on the agenda, which will replace that and will move forward with resolutions as opposed to an ordinance. So. Discussion.
You know, but you're.
Open the hearing and take comments from the board and then you like.
I think this is a great way to progress. It'll be easier for us to amend that resolution each year. Keep current with the cost for these programs.
Agreed, agreed. Any other comments? No comments from the audience?
Chairman, I would make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty three oh one.
Second, moved in second and all in favor say hi.
Hi.
Pose nay. The document will be announced. Next up is the review of bids for Alderford Park and Park Avenue Basin retrofit project. By way of brief history, we had prepared plans, CKS had prepared plans, we had bid the project that came in, put it a bit higher. We value engineered it, I'm gonna do without you, somewhat, and came back and rebid the project and now we're looking at those bids. Anything else you want to add to that?
No, no, I don't think that is. So simply said, and just that it's for the Alderford Road Basin and Park Avenue Basin.
And of course, who is the lower bidder, Michelle?
Richard East Pearson Construction Company, and that's if you go, I'm sorry, it is the Park Avenue Basin, if you go with the alternative ad alternate for that reason.
Is that the work that the obviously the alternate to the seating restoration without base is the the add alternate that affects the overall bid, correct?
Correct.
And is that the one that Doug thought he could do?
The public works director said that he will be able to do that work. That's why we bid it as an alternate.
So is the recommendation at this point to award the base bid and alternate one?
Correct, from our office, yes.
Okay. And then it looks like it's about seventy eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty four dollars above the grant amount.
Correct.
Okay, and Joe, we have sufficient funds squirreled away somewhere for this, since we know this work is to take credit for our TMDL and.
Right, so the we were initially, I think, about thirty five thousand dollars. That would have been the township match, so then roughly double that.
Okay.
At this point, but we do have thirty five thousand dollars additional in the capital reserve fund that can be used to. As township manager.
And we don't really have a choice in the matter in some of this from the standpoint of we need to do a certain number of projects to maintain our M S four permit and good stamping.
We need to reduce the amount of sediment for this permanent period, three hundred thousand pounds per year. The Park Avenue Basin will reduce it by thirty thousand pounds and the Alderford Road Basin will reduce it by forty eight thousand four hundred pounds. So it's a good chunk. It's about twenty five percent of what you're required to do.
Okay.
And on top of all that, we're getting partially grant.
Yes.
Exactly.
That's great. Yeah, so home run. All right, so can I get a motion to award to Richard Pearson, the base bid and alternate one, Park Avenue area without base?
Make that motion the amount one hundred ninety one thousand, eight hundred and eighty two dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Moved then second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Some carries.
Thank you, Don.
All right.
Good job rebidding that. Thank you.
Can I just correct one thing? I think you said is the base bid now.
Yeah. Did I answer? Yeah, you have to do one hundred ninety two, one thousand eight hundred and eighty two dollars for the base bid plus fifty seven thousand, seven hundred and five dollars for alternate number one.
Thank you.
We can amend that motion. That's Mr. Schur, you accept that amendment as your second?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose nay.
Very good.
We still like it. All right, moving right along, initially use hearing accessory building six ten, Leather Oak Station Way, this is where we pass along for our student, uh, Mr. Gary.
Thank you. The township has received, ladies and gentlemen, an application for a conditional use from Michael and Courtney Reeves. They are proposing the construction of a two-story four-car accessory garage with a one thousand, one hundred and four square foot footprint. And they also propose a one thousand eighty eight square foot addition to the existing residential structure, a driveway extension and a four thousand, eight hundred and ninety five square foot pool and deck area. And the overall proposal would remove three hundred and thirty four square feet of existing paving. The property is located, located in the R dash one A residential zoning district and currently contains an existing two-story two thousand sixty seven square foot residential structure and driveway. The proposed residential accessory structure would be more than thirty percent of the square footage of the principal existing building, the residence, and that requires under our zoning ordinance, a conditional use approval as well as a specific design criteria to be met under the zoning ordinance. Procedurally, the applicant has the burden of proof and will proceed with any witnesses and testimony it chooses to. Whereupon we'll have questions first from the board and then from the audience and then if anyone chooses to give testimony for or against the application, they will be permitted to do so. The first thing that we will do is go through the exhibits received by the township. That'll be marked in evidence and put into the record, then we'll proceed with the testimony. The exhibits for the Reeves conditional use hearing are as follows. T one is the conditional use application submitted by Mr. and Mrs. Reeves and dated December twentieth with cover letters from Mr. and Mrs. Reeves and Richard C. Mast, professional engineer. T two is the letter from the applicant dated December twentieth, granting an extension of time as required by the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code in order to conduct this initial hearing. T three is the plan inside of additional use plan for six ten, Letter Oak Station Way, prepared by Mr. Mast and dated December nineteen, twenty twenty two. T four is a review letter dated January eighteen, twenty twenty three from Claire Warner at the Montgomery County Planning Commission. T five is the review letter from our township engineer, C K S engineers dated January sixteen, twenty twenty three. T six is the minutes of the Lower Southford Township Planning Commission on this application, which occurred on January twenty five, twenty twenty three. T seven is the revised version of the conditional use plan marked. It is marked as exhibit T three, but we're remarking it as exhibit T seven. Again, prepared by Mr. Mast and with a revision date of February twenty two, twenty twenty three. T eight is a document that we hope to receive at some point being the proof of publication from the reporter verifying that tonight's hearing was advertised on February twelve and February nineteen in that paper. T nine is the verification by Mr. Bukey, Director of Building and Zoning for the Township that the subject property was posted with notice of tonight's hearing. And finally, T ten is a list of properties and persons and a map showing those properties within five hundred feet of the subject property that were mailed notice of tonight's hearing by first class mail. With that background, then are Mr. and Mrs. Reeves here this evening? Mr. Reeves, I take it?
Yep.
If you want to come forward, if you don't mind, sir. Mr. Mast, if you're going to testify, you'd want to come up to. I have both of those witnesses. Do you have any other witnesses, Mr. Reeves?
No.
Okay, could I have this?
Just one, just go for it. Do you swear the testimony will be truthful? True, so.
Mr. Reeves, it's your floor.
So, yes, I'm just want to put a larger detached garage on with the way that it lines up with a pool that I hope to do. And right now I only have a two-car garage. I'll have kids in a few years and I parked in my driveway because my existing garage is filled up with kids, toys, bikes and stuff. So I'd like to be able to park in a garage, really. Um. So yeah.
Want to move? Okay, um, it is a four-car garage, so it's, I guess it's footprint is almost as big as the footprint of the house then, right?
It is a four-car. The last bay is going to have stairs going upstairs and a bathroom in it, so that will won't be able to park a car in there. So it's really three parts places inside.
And it's not going to have a kitchen upstairs, just a bed.
Correct.
Wait, can I ask questions?
You sure can.
It's not going to be converted into a bedroom, is it?
No, no, I'm going to make it a game room, something like that. Okay, and the plan that has been submitted as exhibit T three accurately depicts where everything is, or am I looking at the original plan as opposed to the amended plan?
Uh, could I see the one you're looking at?
Yes, that's correct. Okay. And is the esteemed Mr. Mast going to testify also? Let's hear that. Mr. Reeves not represented by an attorney, so I'm just going to review the plan information and the specifics with regard to the conditional use application. When a proposed accessory structure is greater than thirty percent of the principal structure, it requires conditional users approved by conditional use only. Ordinance is not real clear on how those calculations are to be made and did go back and forth a little bit with township and with Michelle's office and the review. So the way, the method we use to calculate the percentages is we've tabulated all of the floors in the existing dwelling. That would be the basement, the first floor, second floor. And this did the same for the accessory structure. The definition of building area in the ordinance specifically excludes an unenclosed porch that projects no more than ten feet from the principal structure or the structure it's attached to. However, we do have a porch that exceeds ten feet, so we also included that in the area of both the existing dwelling and the proposed addition and the proposed accessory garage. So with all that having been said, the percentages are based on the existing dwellings without the proposed addition, the proposed accessory structure is about forty six percent of the existing dwelling. After the proposed addition is constructed, it's about thirty five percent. So it's close to the thirty percent, but still exceeds that percentage falls within the conditional use criteria. And Rick, just so we're clear, that that's, those percentages are based on square footage, is square footage rather than pure footprint?
Correct. Total square footage.
Mr. Mast, do those percentages also account for the additions that are coming to conclude to that percentage?
Well, that's the range of percentage. So based on the existing house, it's about forty six percent. When you add the proposed addition, it drops down to thirty six percent because the, or sorry, thirty five percent because obviously the dwelling is getting larger.
No thirty percent is permitted without a condition.
Most importantly, you would see the allowable building coverage for the zoning district.
We do not.
And you are at what percentage?
We will be after all of the construction is complete, will be at five point eight percent. Ten percent is what the allowance is.
Right, so.
About fifty eight percent of what's allowed.
And in our ordinance, the purpose of the conditional use is for anything over thirty percent of the existing structure up to the allowable building coverage.
Correct.
And Mr. Reeves, when you do this work, you're going to do all the whole project at once, so immediately to that percentage, correct?
Yes.
And the overall lot, Mr. Reeves, is almost two acres.
Yes.
Yeah, the lot is eighty one thousand seventy three square feet.
And Rick, since the ordinance talks about the board examining the design of the building, do you have any renderings or studies?
Has the architectural allegations of the. One other question on your engineering plan, I'm assuming I can be correct on that. At the end of the proposed addition to the driveway coming off of the foundation of the four-car garage, there is a unenclosed square that looks like a retaining wall?
Correct.
How, what is the height of that retaining wall?
We have not done a complete grading plan. It's in the neighborhood of four.
Okay, that'll be appropriately fenced, tied back, et cetera.
And there is an option that we would eliminate it and just.
To be willing to do a stormwater control plan or grading plan or have the township look at it once.
That would be the best. That's your part of the building, correct?
It is.
My only concerns I had with the architectural, I'm glad you had one of them. I can ask you of the whole mount is if the building materials are similar to the existing.
Yeah, I'm actually redoing all of the siding and windows on my existing house and it's so they look the same.
Okay.
And party board, all that stuff, stone, new stone, everything. But this is, do you need to see those?
Yeah, from around. That's your broad, we might as well show them.
All right.
Okay. Redone all of.
Yeah, that's.
That's the house. And then that's the garage. Because they were builder and not. I don't know what matters. So, yeah, everything, everything on that.
Mr. Reeves, he looks at one in the paper. I know you've only brought one of that and that's your role. Can you just drop off to the township tomorrow, those two pages that you just referred to? Just put them in, they're going to be a condition that it looks like that.
Sure.
Uh. You don't have to.
Okay.
Okay. As long as we get them tomorrow, we'll put them in file. You can even pull them.
I can, I can meet those. I'll just get them up set.
Then we'll make that, if that's okay, A one.
That's correct. So A, A one, just for the record, A one is a set of, I don't know how many plans.
Well, we're really interested in only two and only four.
A two and A four are the only ones that the chairman gets interested in.
We should be all.
The sheet numbers are A two and A four, not to be confused with the page and applicant exhibit. There are six criteria that have to be met. I just want to quickly go through them. And this is in the accessory building structures, general conditions of the zoning ordinance. Number one, the accessory building shall otherwise comply with foregoing requirements related to use, building separation, building location, height, setbacks and building coverage requirements. Even after all of the construction is done, it will comply with all of the bulk and dimensional criteria in the R one A district plan goes there. Number two, the property on which the structure is located shall have a minimum ladder of sixty thousand square feet. This lot is over eighty thousand square feet, so it exceeds that requirement. The roof pitch of the accessory building shall be similar to that of the principal building. I think you saw is the, with the architectural renderings, it is. Number four, the accessory building shall be constructed of substantially similar building materials as the principal building. Mr. Reeves already testified that that's the plan. Number five, windows or other building articulation shall be provided on all sides of the accessory building and no blank walls are permitted. An examination of the elevation shows that there is a door or window or other treatment on all four sides of that proposed buildings. Number six is that architectural renderings be submitted with any application, which we've already discussed that. And then the general conditional use standards, there's four. The potential adverse impact of buildings, driveways, parking areas, loading areas, outdoor activity areas, light sources, trash areas, storage areas, signs and other potential nuisances on abutting properties in the neighborhood as whole. In my opinion, there's no impact here on what is proposed. The structure is similar in size to other structures, including the principal structures that are in the neighborhood on this lot. And the particular way that it's situated so that it does not exceed the allowed setbacks or the coverages shows that there is no adverse impact for what's proposed. Potential congestion, safety problems on abutting streets, nearby intersections. This is still a residential use, so there's no intended impact. And there's no increase in actually the density of the use of the property. Number three, potential environmental impact that proposed use on the township's streams, ponds, wetlands, parklands. We've already discussed that after this, we will have to do a grading permit, stormwater management plan as well. Number four, proposed use is in compliance with the goal is land use plan and the township's current comprehensive plan. And I believe that it is, it's, it's a residential use in the residential neighborhood and is similar to other types of uses and similar properties and districts in the township.
Hey, Rick, it is along the driveway. There appears to be the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven trees and then a massing of whatever undergrowth is there. Is that what you're depicting on that plan? Those are existing. Those are exist, correct, but they exist.
Yes, yes.
I know we had heard from the adjacent neighbor who was not opposed to this application, but was concerned about buffering just due to the size of the improvement. What is the intent from your standpoint is, I mean, those are meant to stay. Is that sufficient?
They're staying and I talked to Dave Ladley and we're going to come up with something when I do all the landscaping and build something that works, looks good. So it kind of hides my driveway and his property.
So we can, you would be open to a condition and we can craft a condition of a buffer that is worked out in mutual cooperation with the adjacent property owner or how?
I would rather not do it in cooperation with the adjacent property owner. I'd rather do it as approved by the township because you can get in that Jason property.
Can be reviewed at the time of the building permit and grading permit.
Okay. And Mr. Reeves, you understand that no part of the garage can be used for an apartment or for a business?
Yes. What, actually, I did have a question. If I wanted to use it as an office upstairs, is that against anything? Home office?
If it meets the definition of no impact home office under the M P C, which Mr. Mast can easily show you, then wouldn't be a problem at all.
Okay.
And then the reason I asked about bedroom is because of your septic system. Once you treat, you're saying you have a four-bedroom house right now and you have a permitted system for a four-bedroom house.
Right.
If you add any bedrooms, it doesn't matter bathrooms, bedrooms will regulate your need to then adjust your septic system. So if that were to be a thought down the road, you would have to go through another letter of permitting.
Okay, I mean, it might be down the road if I have an in-law move in, but that's a different.
Then you will need to go through a permitting process.
That's fine.
I think that there, there should be a note on the plan to that effect. That's what that should not be.
I have no intentions of.
Understood, but yeah, but when you do, I just make you clear, your septic system permitted for four bedrooms.
Right.
It's, most people think it goes by bathrooms. It's not, it's bedrooms.
Okay.
You know, and that's going to require a return to the township.
That would require, and require work with the county health department on your side. There's a number of things beyond even our regulatory authority that you would have to comply with all that.
Yep.
What was the name of your neighbor? You said his name.
David Ladley?
Ladley, L A D E Y W.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Reeves, I think they both covered the same questions I had and I know the planning commission, you know, went on the same questions as well. One, one of my concerns was the neighbor, so I was really glad to see them see the email from your neighbor.
Yep.
I'm glad to hear you're talking over with him. Has any other neighbor asked you about it or had any question?
No, just him. He's kind of the closest one and we have a good relationship, so.
It's great to hear. We appreciate that as well. And then of course, as Mr. Garrity said, no, no future businesses planned at this moment. And I do believe the bid was to be converted, you know, any kind of, if you want to make it a living facility, you're adding any kind of a cooking facility in there. You would have to come back here for conditional.
Yeah, I'm not going to do any.
And yeah, that's never mind questions. I think we covered that.
Okay.
Any more questions from the board? All right, any questions from the audience?
Let the record show there are, apparently, I can't see, there are apparently no questions from the audience. And I think Mr. Mast should be congratulated on his efforts, both as an engineer and as an attorney.
But that roll well for you? But that roll well for yours.
Uh, if there are no further comments and no further testimony or against the application, we'll close the hearing and. As the board knows, it can take a vote now or take a matter under its.
I would be happy to make a motion to approve the uh, conditional use for Mr. and Mrs. Reeves for their accessory structure. As noted in the application, uh, I would ask that Mr. Garrity would include the conditions related to. Uh, it not be converted for business use, not be converted for bedroom or living space without a future approval. Uh, that may be required at that time and that a. Stormwater plan, grading plan and landscape buffering plan will be submitted to the satisfaction of the township at the time of the building permit application.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second. Move then second in, all in favor, say aye.
Thank you very much.
You want me to leave all of them? Leave them here, okay, Green will send you another.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We won't tell your wife what time you left, so.
All right, moving right along, we will need a uh, motion to approve resolution. Twenty twenty-three dash O six, amending and reestablishing the fee schedule for certain services rendered by. The Lower Southford Township, this is to replace the repeal ordinance.
Mr. Jakowski, just as a question, so this will then become as part of our long uh, reorganization agenda. This will become a standard fixture on our reorganization.
Unless some changes come before. Maybe year sometime and you, you could make resolution changes to that, if they would all be incorporated again, whatever changes you made. In the year would be incorporated at the beginning of the following.
Okay. I'm happy to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three O six, establishing, amending and establishing the fee schedule for certain services rendered by Lower Southford Township.
I'll second it, so move and second it, all in favor, say aye. Both say nay, pushing carries. Next up is uh, resolution twenty twenty-three O seven, which would be preliminary final. Land development approval for two eighty-five Maple Avenue.
Annie Neiman from Hamburg Reuben, here on behalf of two eighty-five Maple Avenue LLC. We read the resolution and it's perfect, we're happy with it.
Michelle's perfect.
Jim, you must have wrote it, right?
Um, wow.
Michelle, is there anything outstanding from your end, other than I know we discussed the waivers at the previous meeting?
Uh, there is nothing outstanding and it stays together, they have to address, um, making minutes in an hour, which is.
Have any questions for the party as well? Last month, you, you're came with a consideration of waivers, I noticed that you put in here to waive the preliminary final land development, but. You did not present that to us last month, why did you add that to there?
That, um, I'm not certain about, I, uh, Kristen Pianto was here for that last month, so I thought that's awesome.
The paperwork we have was revised on January twenty-sixth, our meeting was the February first, but number seven was added February sixth.
Okay. It was not in their waiver request letter, but when Miss Pianto came up and addressed you all, she added that waiver.
See, I do recall as she walked away, she said I should have. That one as well, as she was leaving, but was nothing that we discussed there, I saw that. Cause the paperwork that wasn't revised till the sixth as well, that was my question. Um.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have any more information about that.
Thank you.
For you, but um, I can try to give an answer if you need one or if we're good.
Another question I had, I saw on your review, review, Michelle was about the lighting. And I noticed it wasn't addressed in here, what are the plans for the lighting, you can, would you be going put in here that we shut off, I think it's an hour after?
It is adjusted.
It is within hour?
No, it is addressed in the resolution.
It is in the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Cause I know, I know the. There was a couple of different period of times here and I want to see which one.
It was an hour at, I think it's ninety minutes total after they closed, it was sixty minutes after when the. That's part of the resolution.
The entire content of the, now, with staying the forego, the developers shall not be required to submit a shared driveway agreement and the parking lot lights in the property may remain on until ninety minutes after the closing of the business.
Well, yeah, and my question with that, I know what the planning commission uh, said that she was going to bring that up to the board for discussion as well, cause that. But that was never brought to us and I'm curious why the ninety minutes.
To be honest, I, I don't have much more information.
Sure.
Obviously, on a smooth business.
Right.
Which employs younger. People that are between fourteen and nineteen years old and in the later hours of the evening when we close at seven. And it's dark, they're emptying trash and it does sometimes take longer than an hour to clean up the store. And remove the trash and take it out to the dumpster. And when they're leaving to go home, their travel to their cars, we want them to make sure that it's illuminated, especially for. When it was sixteen, seventeen, eighteen year old. Children are still working at those hours.
I understand that, I um.
Especially in the winter time when it gets dark at four thirty.
And how, how late do you plan for the summer hours, do they go many different times or?
It's still seven, but I believe with our conditional use we have up until.
Ninety minutes, no.
No, what, how late would your business be open in the summer time?
Right now, it's still seven.
Yeah, but if it's in the summertime and when it stays light till nine and there's more people out, are you planning on being open later?
I, at this point, no, but with our conditional use, it extends, I believe until ten. So it could be, if business start booming, it could change till ten.
Would you mean your lights would be able to stay until eleven thirty?
And we, as part of the ordinance as well.
Right, my, my, my concern with that, and I, with all respect, actually, my daughter has friends who work there, had your business as well, so I do know that. Um, you know, we just did last month, the Taco Bell, uh, or, or Arby's up there, which also have younger people employed and. I care just as much regardless, be a teenager, you know, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, however, it's with adequate lighting, my only concern with that. Will be more for the village commercial district and the neighborhood residents, you know, cause if we do go to ten, then go to eleven thirty, I think that, you know, keeping at sixty would be more appropriate.
And I could be wrong, it could be, or conditional use could be not, I don't remember specifically that number.
It would be the time after.
Well, I guess the other question we could do, Kevin. If your concern is that we could do no more than ninety minutes and no later than eleven o'clock.
Definitely.
That would be what I think would be appropriate, that way, you know, if they're leaving at seven, it's on till nine thirty, not a big deal, but if they're leaving at ten, it's off by eleven. Cause I think eleven is the, an appropriate cutoff, cutoff time.
I didn't know it would be earlier than that, cause the meeting minutes from the board meeting says nine o'clock, people close.
If that's.
Yes, I think that way we're safe if they ever come back and change, are you comfortable with that amendment?
I, I appreciate that, yeah, and that's why I've.
Jim, would we?
Wait, if it's, if it's nine o'clock, if, if Michelle's right, then we don't have to do anything, ninety minutes covers every, if, if it always stays at nine o'clock.
Okay, so.
So we'd have to come back.
We're good, so it can't be any later than ten thirty based on that in this formula.
Does that address everything?
That's, um, my only other concern was with the, uh, as I addressed to my colleagues yesterday, the preliminary and final land development, and again, I'd rather see them. Separated, as, and as you've said yesterday, if this was a case where they weren't presented to us as they weren't, this is a perfect example of where we should separate.
You know, I, I had actually thought at the end of the meeting, she had added that, so I, that was my take on how we walked out of that meeting, so.
Well, you're gonna hate me in a little bit, cause I'm coming for preliminary final.
We're good.
Later tonight, um.
The other question? Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three O seven, preliminary final land development approval for the two eighty-five Maple Avenue parking expansion. I'm glad to see your business is successful enough that you need to expand your parking.
I'll second.
Move then second in, all in favor, say aye. Both say nay. Next up, uh, resolution twenty eight, twenty-three O eight, preliminary slash. Final land development approval for eight forty-one Main Street, S D, A two group LLC at Burnfield. And as everyone knows, I have a financial interest in this property, so I will turn it over to Mr. Hannover.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bergman. I believe we have Susan here to represent, thank you. I knew I saw you back there somewhere. Can you give the board a brief overview?
Sure, sure, um, we're here, uh, again, the, the, um. The, the resolution is perfect, it's good.
With that, I'll just be for, Michelle and Stephanie review letters, obviously, there's still some outstanding items, but.
Yes.
In your opinion, they're all achievable and will not substantially change the outcome of the plan itself.
That's correct.
Okay, um, I know we did review waivers at the last meeting and they are accurately reflected from what our discussion was. In the resolution.
The addition of the preliminary final request.
That was discussed at that meeting, though. We did discuss it, yes, so.
We did.
We did. It was brought up at the last meeting, so we know, not, not like we had the previous discussion from, from that standpoint. So I believe, um, you know, I've reviewed this application, I believe that, just to be clear, I know there was discussion with the planning commission and there's some. Differences of opinion with regards to building location placement, but one of the issues uh, that was discussed that I think was a compromised position was. A buffer along the parking lot that was going to be similar to the fencing and wall structure that is in front of the existing house. And that along with a landscape buffer in order to mitigate the impact of the look of the parking lot along sixty-three. And that is now accurately shown on the site plan and architectural drawings are being done by Mr. Kapustas office. That will go along with that and will be reviewed by the engineer's office as part of their final review before this goes to recording plan.
Correct.
Those are the questions I had at this point, Mr. Shelly.
Um, again, uh, we discussed, you know, last month, last month and yesterday, my, I take on the preliminary final. My concerns as a supervisor, Hannover mentioned too, I do feel as the Montgomery County Planning Commission wrote that, and I'll quote here. Placing a prominent parking lot in front of the building is visible on the street would create a gap between buildings and the street and could detract from the street game. Village Commercial District prohibits parking in the front yard area between the primary building and the street. Their interpretation, and I agree with this one, is that in addition to the existing residential structure. The proposed twin unit should be considered primary buildings, cause they are not accessory to the existing buildings. And they recommend that building be brought back up to the twenty foot setback line in line with the existing structure. And that the parking be located behind the buildings. I appreciate that the wall was put up there as well, uh, to have a wall, but I don't feel that that truly would. Be, you know, holds the, holds what a village commercial feel, um, I know we discussed the village commercial feel when this was rezoned. Uh, just a little bit ago and I, you know, those sentiments were shared, that's one of my concerns with that. Another question I have is, uh, another one that was with the dumpster pad location, was there any consideration to move it so it's not as visible to the residential units?
It's for the benefit of the residential units, so that's why it's located right there.
I, I understand.
Yes.
Yeah, so it goes there, I think, um, the only other thing I wanted to ask. Michelle as well, is uh, stormwater management, as the county says. It appears that stormwater from the site would alter into the street through an outlet located in the eastern corner of the property, this could cause, could cause concentrated flow and could potentially create dangerous road conditions. You, what is your opinion on that?
Well, the, the stormwater runoff is collected and managed by an underground system and a rainwater before it is discharged. Um, in the right way currently of Main Street, however, that's where the runoff currently drains in that general. Direction, we had to ask them to pull the stormwater place up. Further away from the road for one, for just that reason among the, some others, and they have moved it up. Further, um, further away from within the right away, I could say that better, um, closer to the right away line.
And Pendot has reviewed it also?
We're working with Pendot.
Okay.
Work out that.
So this is subject to Pendot's review of that drain as well, cause it's draining into a state highway.
Correct.
Thank you, that, that's another reason I'd like to see preliminary and final separated as well, make sure we can follow up with that. They're, they're my question, thank you.
Uh, Joe, I just wanted to add, uh, Kevin, with the uh, moving the building towards the road and the, the, the way this. Property is situated, it'd be virtually impossible to install underground basins or any sort of a, a catch base. On the property, you do, you have to have the water run uphill, so really it's the only way, uh, look at the plans, that, that you can get anything done there. So I don't see how you would, would do it in any other.
And a very good point, and I think the planning commission is just looking at it on paper and not considering the surroundings, not considering the. Topography of the site and the engineering involved at that site as well.
And, and that's why I respect, you know, Michelle's opinion, but again, my take is, although, as opposed to the parking lot and then we did discuss, I know with the previous property of we had. You know, we wanted to emphasize that parking is done behind the property.
And that's, I think it's a problem to power, but I, I, I think the other point to note is, the language in the. Friar Village Commercial Ordinance, which this is under, before the, the recent adoption, spoke about the primary building. And the new ordinance speaks about primary buildings, which is a major difference in the discussion of that, because the old ordinance didn't actually. Make, I think, necessary allowances for properties with multiple buildings that could be considered primary. And furthermore, our ordinance, and this is, you know, something we have to deal with, is. Definitionally, doesn't have a definition for primary building, it does have a definition for principal building. And it creates a, a consternation within interpretation of the zoning, which is problematic, which, um. You know, I, I think we've cleaned up since this application was even made with the new village commercial standards the planning commission went through, so. You know, hopefully as we go through future applications, we have a better understanding of some of these items still, and it's, you know, there's. The ordinance is a little bit lighter with regards to that, so.
Something to mention too, as you're going through there, the speed is pretty high in that area, so it's not a small, like, commercial. Where you're slowing down and really seeing all the sites that are over there, you're going through it quickly. Your focus is gonna be at the top of the hill where those buildings are, you're gonna be looking right over that parking lot.
I agree that that is the case now, but uh, one of the things on our feasibility study, we're working on let her off, that's one of our targets for our next area. Um, or we're actually even with the trail committee, starting to speak with Upper Southford, how we can connect there, cause we want to create, and that's why it was rezoned, you know, according to the village. I, I did vote no, cause I didn't think it should go as far, because again, that's more open, but to create that village commercial atmosphere, that's. That's my take on that, so I, hopefully eventually, it would be slowed down, and when it is slowed down. I don't, you know, I wouldn't wanna walk next to a wall, but anyone see that parking lot, that's my take.
Other, other questions from the board?
Thank, thank you very much.
Um, at this point, I'll entertain a motion on resolution twenty twenty-three O eight.
I'll make the motion.
That a motion to approve, approve, thank you. Always gotta clarify, is there a. Second by Mr. Kraus. Uh, we've had a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye, aye, any opposed?
Aye, next.
Any abstain?
I abstain.
Okay, with a three zero one, the, uh, three one one, motion is approved for resolution twenty twenty-three O eight, thank you all very much. All right, moving along, back to Mr. Bergman, I was gonna get on a roll.
Don't give me the. That's right, resolution, we'll move on, resolution twenty twenty-three dash O nine, preliminary flash, final land development. Appeal for twenty-five Fretz Road, this is affectionately known as the Allman's.
Good evening, good to see you, good to see you again, uh, my name is Jim Mazika from Barry Ice and Associates, so, in general, I'm here with. From Corrigan from Mount Mac. Um, we, we have received the, uh, the, the draft or the, the resolution and uh, don't really have any objections, just. One question on the deferrals, I, I thought maybe I misunderstood from last meeting, I thought. That the, the remaining sidewalk along Fretz Road from the current driveway towards the west, which. Uh, where it has to go past the existing detention basin and uh, down to the stream, the wetlands. I thought that was recommended for, for a waiver, just because everybody understood that was pretty much unfeasible. And there was a connection across the street, so I had submitted a letter to request that waiver, but it shows up as a total deferral. In, in the resolution and we, we don't have really any objection, uh. In, in the resolution and we, we don't have really any objection, uh, you know, to the resolution as written, but I just thought that.
I do recall that this guy.
Yeah.
The question is, at this point, it might be a difference about a distinction.
Yeah.
So.
Right. Yeah, like I said, we, we don't.
Some of you are going to take the resolution.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask Michelle if everything looks okay, and then we'll probably make a motion.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're good.
Michelle?
I was just going to say the perfect resolution.
Yeah, I don't know. Michelle, are you good? Stephanie?
Yes.
I don't have any other questions.
All right, so we'll, uh, ask for a motion to.
Again, just one more thing. Oh, sorry. I explained, you know, last time with the first again, but I would like to, uh, you know, thank you the way I think you guys have really. Hook into account that screen walls, put in all that extra effort, but all that, and you did a good job and keep it hidden as well. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And before we finish also, I'd just like to recognize Allmac for. Their community outreach, the work they're doing with the Southern area high school students and what you're bringing in and. The, um, activities that you're providing them and the opportunities they would never have as high school students is fantastic. We're happy to have you in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And with that, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three oh nine.
I'll second it. Move then second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Nice have it for one.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, next up, tri-party agreement, uh, Jacobs Crossing at, at High Point at Southford. Authorization is executed.
Mr. Bourbon, we have both the attorneys. Uh, here on one of the most confusing agreements I've ever seen in my life. Just the first five pages took me two hours with Mr. Freeman to go over. Do we know yet whether the parties are prepared, uh, to execute the agreement? Uh, Mr. Rosaroff?
George Rosaroff on behalf of K Builders and, uh. Yes, that's your question.
Yeah, I'm G Raffielli for Fox Lane Homes. Yeah, we approved the agreement. I actually have executed copies from Fox Lane since we put it together. I'll leave two copies with you. I gave one copy to George also.
Okay, that, the fact that both parties are, is it, I'm sorry, is it signed or will, will be signed?
Mine is signed.
Mine, I just got like very end of the day, there's some possible, they're up in downtown.
Okay, but you, but you.
I talked to the owner of the company. Richard Coes is the owner of the K Builders. He's, he verbally told me, yes.
Okay, so that, that takes care of quite a few problems.
And just for a purpose of anybody who watches this down the road or understand what we're talking about, I'm going to try to give a very brief summary of this.
Good luck.
Thank you. There is an extension to Oak Drive that was proposed in our long-term master plan. That would be built by K Builders as part of the approved Jacobs Crossing subdivision. They are not prepared to start their project yet. Fox Lane's High Point. Project relies on that extension for two of its road connections. They have started their project and need it at this point. Thus, they are going to take the place of K Builders, post the financial security and install those improvements. In agreement with K and K will either reimburse them at some point and there will be a mortgage placed. How that gets worked out is really not our township concern, but it is shown in the tri-party agreement. End result is Fox Lane upon the signature of this agreement will be building that extension, which will provide the necessary road frontage for High Point to be built as originally intended.
Almost.
Almost there.
Yeah, almost there. Um, we had the problem that. Of who was going to put the final wearing course on.
Well, I didn't get there yet.
Oh, I think you were done.
But I'm not done yet. As part of Fox Lane's project, they were to take what was going to be the K Builder section of Oak Drive extension and extend it further with a culvert crossing. And that is part of their approved subdivision in which they still have to pose financial security at this point for that portion of the project and start that project. They will. If the wearing course is not done by K Builders, by the time they progress with the culvert crossing, they will then also take on the responsibility of the final wearing course. So that whole extension of Oak Drive, as originally intended with both subdivisions, will be fully complete by the time they walk away from the project.
Yes.
Now you're, you, you're on.
Did I get it there now? I'm done now.
Right. The only thing that was filled out this afternoon, and it won't really make any differences. The tri-party agreement is very, very close to a land development agreement, a developer's agreement.
Yeah.
And it may be that it suffices for that purpose. If for any reason it doesn't suffice, there might be one more agreement just with Fox Lane. That just.
We, yeah, we, we discussed an amendment to the, to our final land development agreement, and I'm sure George would probably have to change to it by the time they execute it. So. That, we're fully expecting that. I know that's coming after this agreement, so I, yeah.
And I think, just so the board is aware, the. The ability to have both parties sign this agreement takes care of a couple of problems. Uh, one is we don't have to authorize additional building permits. Because when this is all signed, you'll be entitled to all you want.
Yes.
I believe.
Yes, but I'd also like to ask tonight that we have release of our, you know, building permits that are already in at the township, because our existing land development agreement. Does allow for that. Our exist, we've met. The board may, is what our existing land development agreement says. Our existing land development agreement says that if the Oak Drive extension is not completed. The township may issue additional building permits and occupancy permits upon us submitting an amended final plan. Consistent with all the township ordinances while that plan is pending, which we do have.
Right.
And we're going to get rid of.
And which you realize no one likes.
Uh, including.
Probably you.
Yeah, we like it probably, we like it probably the least, but. We had, I mean, that was the only thing we had. We had to put it in there. It's a worst case scenario. I hope we throw it out tomorrow as soon as we get K's signature. But. But that's why it's pending. We got a recommendation from the planning commission. So we just have, I don't know, six building permits coming right now.
Yeah, we have, so far we have fifteen sold out there. Um, one of our settled, which was the unit next to our model loan, which was the twin. Um, but we have six building permits for people that had bought. Yeah, in twenty twenty two that we. They knew there was going to be a delay going into just based on normal approval time frames. But people with low rate locks, and so it, it, it is possible to do something with building permits at least for those. First six, first eight until K signs the agreement.
Mr. Zarowski, when do you anticipate a signature for Mr. Coes?
I do.
No, wait, wait.
Oh, uh, like, the only caveat to this is we do have to run it by our lender. Who has verbally, again, three emails and said they were willing to allow the second. Uh, mortgage to be put in place, but we still have to share the mortgage with them to get their permission to do that. So I think in a balance of caution, I want to get that in place, smirking the bank. To make sure that they okay it, because although documents obviously can't put a second mortgage out without the permission.
Are you assuming this will be signed within the next three days, the next three weeks, the next one day?
No, I would expect the next. Three to five days. I mean, we're going to get over to Murdian Banks, our lender, we're going to get over to them tomorrow and hopefully get an answer tomorrow, the next day. Uh, what I've asked my client to do is actually sign it. I was going to hold it in escrow till we get that in place. So I'll physically get a signature in a day or two and just make sure that our lenders okay with it.
And I'm noticing that the next item on the agenda is your request for an extension of time.
That's correct.
That gives the township a little bit of leverage.
It does. Yeah, and by the way, your resolution is okay.
As soon as they get this signature on the agreement.
And which our resolution is contingent upon us signing you. So we have the, the two go ahead and.
I'm, I'm okay with what she is proposing. My only concern, obviously, is if, uh. The president of K goes to Venezuela and stays there.
They, he's seen his office tomorrow. I don't know. I've already got it.
That would, that would be a concern.
We, we don't want Plan B either, but it is a safe and accessible solution. I mean, in all honesty, if we were stuck with it, the worst case scenario for us is we would lose fourteen lots. We're not looking to do that either. We're really just looking to get these building permits released so that we can get these purchasers, you know.
And how many are?
There are six pending right now.
And how many could you live with for a couple of days?
So we have thirteen other sales out there, so it's, the six have been in there. The six have been sold for probably over four months.
Uh, Michelle, what do you think?
I only have, uh, two building permits in my office that haven't been approved yet because we're waiting for tonight. Uh, to approve them. I think there's only, there's only two buildings.
Yeah, two, three unit buildings.
I'm sorry, when I, yeah, so two, three unit buildings.
Six units.
Yeah.
The math's all the same, which no matter how you give the building up.
Um, my only concern is the same concern that you're sharing tonight. What happens if this never gets approved? Then we have a plan for cul-de-sac that you all haven't approved yet.
Well, I, I mean, the, the, you would, the risk would be on you if, if, if he goes to Venezuela, then, you know, they may not like that, the cul-de-sac plan.
Understood.
Okay. And with that understanding, I mean, I don't have a problem with six because they do happen to be.
Right.
Well, they're, they're on top of, right? Exactly where they are on the first one.
Mm-hmm.
So they're all in the same place.
Yeah, no changes. What? No changes?
That makes sense. We also have worry that risk could be on us at that cul-de-sac or if that. Extension is never completed. You know, if that, if that extension is never completed. We don't know for sure, you know, what's going to happen in phase one.
The, the thing is though, uh, Kevin, you both, due respect, we have a lot of their money. And, uh, they're not going to see any of it unless. We get pretty much what's in the tri-party agreement anyway.
I understand. The, the only other concern that I really have though is the precedent that we set. This isn't complete yet. We don't know. You know, we don't know if we're going to have a signature. Again, we don't have an understand your situation and that, but I hate to set a precedent where we're relying. On something else, just to expediate everything for future developers, you know, to come in and say, well, you know, we'll get this done and we'll work it out with them later. I, I don't, I don't like that precedent.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're asking you to amend for, for my request right now. I don't believe we're asking you to amend an existing agreement. It's provided in, in the agreement. This is obviously an extreme and unusual circumstance, um, with the Oak Drive extension. I know it's an important improvement for the township. You know, we're just looking to get it done. We've worked together, I think, very well at coming to, um, an agreement here.
It's been heavily negotiated over.
Yeah.
That's understated.
Yeah, a long period of time and it benefits. Our project, his project in the long term, and obviously the township gets the improvements that they need, so.
But I, I think, they just, if I might, Chris.
Sure.
To defer for Kevin, we not only have their money, we also have their, their, their remaining building permits.
But I also think the other piece of this is it's convoluted. Two pieces here. If it was not for K working with them in this tri-party agreement, they'd be standing in front of us with an amended land development plan, which they've already submitted, which the planning commission has recommended. And I believe the language of the developer's agreement that was signed by the township said, once that plan was submitted, not approved, not built, submitted. The board may. Allow for the building permit. So it is our discretion, but it's not a, it was not something that wasn't thought of when. Their project was approved and started and funded under their development agreement. It's great that I think we're going to be able to be able to move in the other direction, because that's really the result we want, but there is the actual. Set of procedures that was set up. So I don't think it's setting a precedent other than how the developer's agreement reads is what we have, we, we have to hold them there, them accountable to, and this. Exact scenario was foreseen in the way that developer's agreement was drawn up. It was also perfect.
It was perfect. Depending upon what happens right now, it might be.
Might get breaks next year.
Yeah.
Okay. They're my concerns and then, you know, if it's not completed, we do have a cul-de-sac, as Michelle alluded to, that we didn't, you know, is not with our comprehensive plan. It's not something that we have a say in as well. And I mean, if we're going to go along with it as well, uh, one thing that the county mentioned with regards to sidewalks. Repose both just in case they're not filled. Is that something that you would?
Will, that, that also.
Yeah, that was that.
That, that will come in, if, if this tri-party thing falls apart, that's going to come in front of us and we're going to be able to beat the heck out of that thing.
And that's what I'm saying. I, I don't see the need to rush it.
Sorry, but we will. But we're not, what are you rushing one?
Well, not necessarily rush, but again, this is not something we're, we're setting up.
No, I'm asking, what, what decision do you think we should not be making right now?
I, I think we should be making a decision on whether or not we agree that this is a good idea. I don't think it's a good idea for the precedent that we set the future developments. And again, we don't, we cannot guarantee we don't have the signature. We don't know that it will be completed. That's.
But, but I'm, but I'm missing, so what don't you, so you don't think we should release the building permits? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying I don't think we should approve the tri-party agreement until it's fully, yes. And I'm going to recommend that we execute it when. You know, when it's signature, when we have all the.
Proved subject to signatures.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm sorry, exactly. I just want to make sure it's clear, because this is complicated.
As long as it's good in the notes.
Yeah. So what we're talking about here is that we, the township's going to conditionally approve its execution of the dry party agreement and that condition is solely. Uh, when Mr. Azarovski's client delivers the signed and notarized. Uh, unamended here. At unamended and then that also would take care of the. Uh. Request, which I can't find at the moment.
It's the next one down. We'll do.
Gee, we'll get to it.
No, no, that's not the next one. Uh, the next one is not on here.
What, the permits?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not on there because it was just part of the, our existing land development agreement. I mean, it's.
Right. So it's a request that doesn't need to be on the agenda. It's just a request. Um, but it. Just so we're clear that that request is. Uh, if it's granted by the, by the board, that'll be it until we see either the. Fully approved cul-de-sac plan or the signed. Tri-party agreement.
Yeah.
Good. All right, I'd make a motion to authorize. The appropriate township official to execute tri-party agreement. Jacobs Crossing and High Point at Southford upon presentation of executed documents by both parties and unamended as to the draft that was circulated this afternoon. Um, and would further. Agree that in the current developer's agreement, they have satisfied the condition that would allow for a total of six additional building permits. In three bill, in two buildings to be issued as appropriate by township staff upon approval by. The engineer and the, the inspectors.
Two building permits.
Yeah, it was just. It's two building permits, not six.
Yeah, one building because it's a.
But no, but a unit gets an individual building permit.
No, the building gets an individual.
Fun, whatever you want to do. The total of six units, two buildings.
Yeah.
Very good.
So we have a motion?
I will second that. Mentioned signature too.
Oh, yes. No, the permits are not pending the signature.
Permits are now. Are ready. Permits are ready, but we're still, we're still waiting. So upon approval of signature as well.
Oh, it's a signature of the tri-party agreement. What, the permits being issued?
One is, no, they don't.
I know, I didn't. Right, right.
Okay, so which one are we?
We are authorizing the appropriate township official to execute the tri-party agreement upon its presentation to us with signatures from both parties. Okay, and unamended from the draft that we saw this afternoon. Okay, second act, action within, well, let's just vote on that action.
I'll make that.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay.
Nay.
Nice have it, pay one.
I would then. Well, I think actually. I would make a motion to amend the agenda. To include a request by Fox Lane Homes to authorize the. Issuance of building permits. If there are second to that.
Two building permits.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to get to a motion. This is just to get it on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
It is not on the agenda. Anybody want to second that?
On the floor.
I will second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay.
Nay.
I will then make a motion to authorize. The issuance of two building permits for six units. In accordance with the terms of the current developer's agreement with. Fox Lane Homes for the High Point at Southford project.
So move.
I will second.
Move and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay.
Nay.
Four one, the ice.
And let's just wrap this up.
Let's do it.
But I'm going to make a, a motion to authorize the resolution twenty twenty three ten. The Jacobs Crossing extension as written, which would extend the five-year protections on the MPC for one twelve-month period. Conditioned upon the presentation of the executed tri-party agreement by K Builders to this township. What it says, that's, that's why I reiterated it.
Which is acceptable to K.
It's not perfect.
It's, it's okay.
So move.
I will second.
Move and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Four one, the ice have.
Though you please leave.
And George, would you make sure to tell your, your client that one year is one year?
Understood.
And then we're back here again.
Understood. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good to see you again.
All right, next up, we have, uh, the discussion of waivers for three fifty five Maple Avenue.
I'm cranky at this point.
I'm, I'm sensing that.
Hey, if perfect and me are used together in the same sentence, I'm okay with that. Um, okay, so I'm Annie Neiman from Hamburg Rubin here on behalf of Velocity Venture Partners LLC, here to talk about three fifty five Maple Ave. Okay. Before we get started, I'm going to pass out a printed copies of. I printed copies of. The review letter. Does everyone have it? I can. I mean, I keep seeing the review letter and maybe I don't need to pass it out.
You have a waiver request there of February sixteen.
That's right. That that's a waiver letter that I have printed out here. Yeah. Yeah, we have four. That is.
You're gonna get the sense of this board by the time you're done. Alright, let's move through them.
Okay, alright, well, let's just skip past my introduction. We all know the site. We all know the project. We need four waivers. Um I should say too that we've been before the planning commission. We have the recommendation for preliminary final approval. Uh so if we're looking at the letter, number one, we're asking for preliminary final final approval, which requires a waiver. Um we think that it was just more expedient. We're not really doing much with this site. We're, you know, everything we're doing is internal to that building. Uh so that's why we would ask for preliminary final. There's not too much going on. Uh three and four, I'm gonna go a little bit out of order. These are both engineering issues, having to deal with heights. We've spoken with Michelle and. Uh to my knowledge, she's okay with these waivers. Is that correct? Yeah, as discussed with the planning mission. Okay, and now number two. So we're requesting a partial waiver from section one forty-two forty-one. For curbs, sidewalks, and stormwater along our frontage. So we have quite a bit of frontage. We have both both oak and maple are a frontage for us. And we know that pedestrian connectivity is a big issue for the township. Uh so what we would like to do is put in an eight-foot wide macadam trail along Oak and Maple. And I had sent Mike some plans to stick up there, but. And I think. If you don't mark.
Mike's not here.
Mike's not here, but. Somehow you're magical here. So the trail we're proposing. Uh and sorry guys, again, I was hoping that it should be on the screen. That's on me. Why orient myself? Okay, so. We were going to be doing. The trail.
I'm Lindsay Brallinger with Bowler Engineering, by the way.
So orient me. It was a trail starting, it was starting down here, correct?
Right, so okay, so here. This is the existing building, parking area, so we're Oak Drive, Maple Ave. So our area of improvement. Is this this area right in here where we're um adding the loading dock areas. So the trail, sorry, the trail that um we were looking to propose would. So there's an existing trail rate um that runs along Oak on this side. So we would bring it across. Oak Drive here and then continue down Oak. And then up Maple. Go our driveway.
My uh uh cross your driveway to the property corner?
So we would be crossing. There were some other trails over here, so we were proposing a crosswalk around.
Or I'm sorry, I think it was right here.
But at the other end, you're gonna take it down to the property corner. Eventually we'd like to get to Long Night Drive.
And and the trail would meander as well because of all the existing.
That's why we want the trail, not a sidewalk.
Where will the crossing be? On Oak. Between your driveway and the driveway for the assisted living facility across the street.
So we would cross on this side of our driveway.
It's safer if the truck traffic's gonna be coming out there, right?
Right, which is what was discussed with.
Sidewalks uh are obviously to be maintained during weather conditions. Trails not necessarily. What are your plans for this during?
But I think it's a good point. We don't require our trail system to be done, but you will agree to that as part of. Okay.
Well, really, that's gonna be able to people those big mature, beautiful trees, and otherwise we would have to clear some out to put a sidewalk.
One of the important things we're trying to do with the trails and connectivity is to make sure that we have connectivity, like for example, even schools, stuff like that, get bus stops, but what we're finding is with our trails, we can't. Rely on them for those reasons. In this, in this area, what I'm getting at is the sidewalks, and I understand this could be a great option too. I have. I'd have to look at this more as well, but it offers somebody another. Place where people could cross all, you know. All season long, and that's that's my concern too.
So you'd be agreeable to that with the condition you maintain. So and the only other comment I'd make on that waiver from my viewpoint is it would be a. Deferral, not a waiver. Okay, so that, you know, obviously the, we're we're willing to. Take the macadam trail in lieu of the sidewalk, but. You may still be obligated for curb and stormwater management and other things in the future versus waiving them at this point, which. Could potentially mean you never have to do them. We don't do that.
Absolutely. We discussed that. That's fine.
Good with that, John?
Will we receive a plan for the, how the? It's going to be laid out the uh.
So that's something, so the planning commission gave us their recommendation, but they do want us to come back to talk about the trail. Um we are going to be field locating it with township. Um and so that we would ask that we still get the preliminary final approval. And on the condition that we work through the trail. Uh with the township after the fact that the the issue here is that. You know, we are so far into this project and we haven't seen any return on our investment. And we're hoping that, you know, once we get an approval under our belt, we can start tying down some tenants, start making some money, and with that money, we will be funding this trail. So.
Yeah, I didn't follow your your comment.
We don't waive. Curb sidewalk or stormwater management. We do a deferral. That means you don't have to do it as part of this application. You just, if you come in again with something else, you may be asked to do it at that time.
Understood a hundred percent.
Some people have taken a position that if we waive it at this point, it's forever waived and we just don't wanna make that a problem.
Sorry, John, I thought Kristen had spoken with you guys.
Yeah, I completely understand. Because obviously this is, I appreciate. I'd like to see this, you know, before I say, oh yeah, I'm all favorite, but that is, I appreciate that consideration, including the trees, all that, and it's all. Clicking it clear, but again, that is something that is also a part of this waiver.
So the township is okay with where it's going to.
Okay, good, and we'll work with the ti- the township on the timing of that too. So, you know, we're gonna give you guys what you what you want, so.
And you're, you're good on your waiver discussion, and I think you have a sense of the board.
I think so.
Good.
And uh I look forward to seeing that.
Good.
Good job.
Thank you. Was it perfect?
Greg, don't get comfortable. You can leave now. Yes. Oh, that, yeah, that was a question I had while they're here, even though it's not a real waiver discussion. At the planning commission, there is a discussion of truck traffic rather than using the one thirteen exit to actually use the Oak Drive exit. And use the signal then that's at Oak and one thirteen. There is general consensus from, I understand at the planning commission, that that seemed to make sense. Stephanie, I know you were not at the planning commission. Um so you were not there to either throw your body across this or support it whichever way you may. I don't know what your your thoughts are on that, and I'm assuming that's why Mr. Richardson's here also.
Uh I actually, I do support using the Oak Drive access out to the signal uh with one thirteen, the hill, the speed of the traffic coming down.
So it would be appropriately signed though to. It's right turns coming out. The truck traffic is not making a left onto the drive.
Absolutely.
And handle that way.
Yes, is there a certain time period that you would expect more traffic than others? I mean, the fact that we don't have a a ten, I guess it's hard to say. Yeah, it's hard to see whether you, whether or not you even have what type of trucks.
But I will say, and something that I was prepared to talk about, but. I know it's been a long night. Um so when you guys crafted this text amendment. Um you you put some percentage limits on our uses, so that's going to automatically limit the number of trucks. So we're really not anticipating too many trucks. Um we're looking mostly at box trucks. I don't, I don't think we're gonna get many of the WD sixty-seven trucks. Um so hopefully there isn't going to be actually too much truck traffic anyway.
And Greg, from your viewpoint. What's your thoughts on this?
Yeah, I agree with the planning commission. I mean, it was, you know, once that came out, we were directed to have all the trucks go out to.
Right.
On the one thirteen directly. And so to have the opportunity to bring them out also, make a right turn. And then use the signal to proceed whichever direction, you know, one thirteen is another route. So GPS is normally gonna bring them to and from. One thirteen anyway, but. Being able to use a signalized control of the intersection is always the best option. Uh I had the opportunity to talk to uh Stephanie today. And, you know, she's had discussions with Michelle. Michelle wasn't at the meeting. Uh and I think what we'll do is appropriately sign what we have is right now is a sketch that shows. A sign that says no left turns for trucks. Uh well, we can do that appropriately internally, you know, direct tracks across a certain direction. We don't want trucks turning right into that driving being coming from Maple. Uh so we'll basically, you know.
Well, and that was the only question I have. We've had to work very hard. Uh with the quarry that is around the corner to avoid their truck traffic from using Oak Drive as a cut through over to sixty-three to head points east. So my only question would be, yes, you can control them going out, making a right turn to go out to one thirteen. I think one of the other things we would just have to resolve, and if it could be something that, you know, we can write into a developer's agreement for you to to talk to your tenants about, we've been successful with the quarry. Is that they are not coming to the site utilizing Oak Drive from the term of, they will take the numbered route sixty-three to one thirteen. And around to get into your site as well.
I mean, I I'll agree to.
You notify them.
In the lease agreements.
And we've done that with the quarry. The quarry has been very successful. Some of their visitors to the quarry have not, but they have been successful in regulating that, but I think otherwise that becomes the safe route. Because it's too residential further down for it to become the truck route, yeah.
Particularly with the uh retirement community there and.
Get get clarification that. Um it is acceptable that trucks coming from sixty-three to one thirteen. Into the site and use the signal.
Oh, absolutely. Basically, from one thirteen to Maple is okay. It's after, you know, it's Maple and beyond that we're trying to avoid the truck traffic.
And we don't want, we don't wanna see that four-way intersection trucks back.
Exactly.
Yeah, and there's two ways. If they're coming from sixty-three, you can turn in the red signal or you can turn it into.
Right.
You know, because they're, you know, it's it's not a not a difficult turn to come into the site.
Correct, it's coming out.
Exiting out of the site and then at an uncontrolled intersection.
Getting speed up and, yeah.
Right, we wanted to send them out to where it's controlled intersection.
Use the signal even to go in just because it's coming up the hill on one thirteen. If a truck is stopped there, it's it's a little wider in that area. Cars could go around, but it.
And 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 actually, if you look at the site plan, where those docks are in the loading areas, it's actually closer.
It's where they wanna be.
So it's it's a it's a better route anyway and. You know, we wanna get them in and out as quickly as possible. I think it's a, and one of the other things the planning mission pointed out is that section of Oak. Doesn't have the homes.
Exactly, that's. With the uh the institutional use and it makes sense.
Two reasons why they were in sport, which were mainly was be able to use the signal and two. It would have less impact on the neighbors than as opposed to in the other direction.
And that's why I also wanna make sure the trail crossing was before that eh exit so that people aren't crossing where the truck traffic.
Yeah, we we see the natural, you come up to the driveway along Oak, cross that location, and then you just, we would have to add. Maybe like a fifteen, twenty-foot section of the cabin on the other side, just to tie in. So. We can work through Michelle and Stephanie. I I don't know if it was pointed out, I think it was, was the planning mission also mentioned. A crossing at Oak and Maple.
Yes, and we just thought, yes.
Yeah, that was important. They felt that, you know, there, the infrastructure's there. We could tie into that.
And that makes a nice trail connection for us. It's been.
Anything else? Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know Kristen, she.
She can stay away more often.
Can we get a decision?
No.
Not tonight.
No, there's no decision. This, this is just waiver request. The resolution is then prepared.
Perfect, okay.
You did ask though.
Well, now that you told Kristen, I asked, that's really what matters.
Perfect resolution.
Thank you so much.
Alright, moving on, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Authorizing the application for a DCNR grant for a bio-retention basin. At the Harleysville Community Center, this application was put together by our friends at CKS. And they've got a color graphic attached. And what it's gonna look like.
Michelle, so. The the water getting to this fire, obviously there's an underground pipe system currently with inlets that runs all the way down through this swell. Underneath the path, underneath where this basin is going at this point. Are we eliminating that and trying to get any of that into the basin? Are we still bypassing all that and then taking? How how are we getting water into this basin around all the improvements that are out there?
It's naturally flowing down to that area. That's a low point of that area.
Right, but it's picked up in a bunch of inlets ahead of it as well.
Along the trail, like you said, it will be directed into this basin.
So the whole volume of water coming down that pipe is going into the basement, isn't it? I think that's Chris's question.
Here's.
What's coming to it?
Where is, how how are we getting water into the surface in the basin? Are we gonna disconnect this on that inlet into the surface of the basin?
A ton of water, figure that comes all the way from the.
So you'll be shortening up that where the discharge pipe is now?
Where the uh the entry, the entrance.
This right here, over here, this will become, this will pick that water up and coming here rather than go going directly into that inlet.
Oh, gotcha, okay. So you're breaking.
Do we have?
Breaking a pipe, making.
For that basin. I mean, that that's a a large volume of water for what is a relatively small basin area.
Yeah, well, the basin is gonna be preliminarily one seventy-five by fifty-five right now by two feet deep. And it's just going to be used for water quality, so when you get the sediment reduction products.
Otherwise it flushes through.
Otherwise it'll just flush through. And this one is in the uh Indian Creek watershed as opposed to the other one, which is the Skipback Creek. This one's gonna get you about twenty-four thousand pounds of sediment reduction, which in the Indian Creek watershed is sixty-two percent of what you are. Trying to do.
It's gonna make scout meetings more interesting.
Yeah, and that and that's another thing. I'm guessing with the buffers in place, there's obviously. All children, people running around playing in there.
Yes, in fact, we're gonna a a major component of this.
That's why I was wondering, would the signs that tell the bufferings and whatnot?
Again, what we're proposing to do, uh we've got assurances from a boy scout leader and a cop scout leader who might be on the dais. Saying that their groups will be coming down. Um to learn about the basin itself.
And help plan it. Absolutely.
Maybe we'll discover another tennis court under there.
The Indian Valley Middle School.
Safe spot would be great. Great. Make a motion to authorize resolution twenty twenty-three eleven.
Moved.
I will second.
Move then seconded, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Five oh. Alright, next up. Uh this is an indemnity agreement concerning. A PennDOT Highway accident permit for stormwater management facilities located within the state's right-of-way along Main Street. Uh at eight forty-one Main Street, so I am once again gonna recuse myself since I've already signed the document. Uh and turn it over to Kristen.
See you. Uh as we have in the past, uh the state requires the municipality. To sign off on the stormwater facilities that are in the state right of way, and then we turn around and put that onus right back on to the applicant. And that is what this indemnity agreement does. We've done this in the past. I would make a motion to. Authorize the execution of the indemnity agreement as noted.
I will second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Eddie and Stane. Alright, four zero one, thank you very much. Now back to you.
Alright, motion to approve fire police assistance for the Harleysville Bank Community Appreciation Day on June tenth, twenty twenty-three from. One to three o'clock in the afternoon.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Both say nay. And a motion to approve fire police assistance for Tomason Day Fisher's Park on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-three from ten AM to four PM.
Moved.
Second.
Move then seconded, all in favor, say aye. So the point of the meeting where we opened for our second discussion period. Is there anyone wishing to be recognized?
Uh just have a a quick. Comment um about the Mascaro property that uh. Of the New Boys Life Ranch or.
Oh, yeah.
They are. The sewer authority is requesting that we get all the information. We're kinda getting stuff. Uh from that secondhand right now. Cause they're. They're proposing a new or upgrading their existing sewer. Unfortunately, uh. Even though it's a private system, um the DEP EPA, everybody is going to put it off on the sewer authority. And we will be controlling that after a while.
The uh DEP is going to try to put it off on the township. The, uh, DEP is going to try to put it off on the township.
Correct.
Who will probably might consider putting it off on the sewer authority.
Would you will?